All right, I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. Can the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Dugger?
I'm here.
Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg?
Here.
Counselor Hassan?
Here.
Council President Kenny?
Here.
Teeter?
Here.
Counselor Tivnan?
Here.
Mayor Beatty?
Here. Okay, so tonight, we're going to start with visitor comment period. As a reminder, Beaverton has recently adjusted how we're taking public comment. It requires a preregistration the day before. And so if you're here hoping to testify and didn't get onto the agenda, you could please send us an email. We all read it. Our addresses are public record. With that, public testimony is an essential part of local government business. It's how we operate and do things. However, it is not a time for dialogue. It is a time for us to listen. If follow-up is needed, the city recorder and the assistant city manager, Dan, are here today and will handle any follow-up. We do have one in-person testimony, and that is Alicia. And when you're ready to go.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name's Alicia Burmese. I serve as the CEO and President of the Beaverton Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to speak tonight about Agenda Bill 24024. We know that many people enjoy First Street Commons, especially as the weather is getting nicer. We acknowledge the need and thank the city for creating a space during the pandemic where community members could gather safely and enjoy each other's company. While there were concerns over alcohol consumption in that space during the pandemic, we can acknowledge that the benefits far outweighed the risks. However, as we have emerged from the pandemic, stay-at-home orders no longer exist. Many businesses have, with your help and grants, created their own outdoor dining. And we ask if this resolution continues to be necessary and do the benefits of allowing alcohol to be consumed in an unmonitored area continue to outweigh the risks? We ask if you have thoroughly considered the OLCC implications? We ask what the OLCC implications are? We ask, has Beaverton Police Department been consulted about this? Does this have any effect on their capacity to maintain safety in the downtown? Have the surrounding businesses been consulted on the continuation of alcohol consumption in the commons? Is the city prepared to hold the surrounding business and residents harmless from any liabilities or violations of any other conflicting laws? Who will monitor the area for compliance to all other liquor liability laws that are potentially impactful? Minors in possession, alcohol outside of the barriers, overconsumption? Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we're on to our proclamation portion of the evening. I am walking on two additional proclamations that are not listed. One is, we're going to start with Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, read by the council president.
Proclamation, City of Beaverton. Whereas Beaverton celebrates its strength as one of the most diverse cities in Oregon, where one in three residents identifies as a person of color and one in five was born outside of the United States. And whereas Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander communities in Beaverton represents over 16% of the population and include dozens of languages and cultures. And whereas we recognize the generations of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders who have enriched Beaverton's history, local economy, and cultural vibrancy, and who are instrumental to our future's success. And whereas the month of May was chosen for this Heritage Month to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese to the United States on May 7th, 1843, and the anniversary of the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May 10th, 1869, for which the majority of the tracks laid were by Chinese immigrants. And whereas Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander communities have persevered over discrimination, exclusion, persecution, incarceration, and disparities, and continue to experience injustices today. And whereas AANHPI Heritage Month is a time to celebrate the remarkable achievements and pay tribute to the generations of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders who have contributed to our cities and the Americas' history, society, and culture. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Beaverton, Oregon, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
You, your turn.
Okay, I got it. This is a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor for Jewish American Heritage Month. Whereas ever since 1654, Jewish immigrants first arrived on the shores of what is now the United States, Jewish people have played a central role in the creation, growth, freedom, prosperity, and strength of the United States. And whereas in 2006, President George W. Bush proclaimed May as Jewish American Heritage Month in the United States. And whereas Jewish American Heritage Month is a tribute to the generations of Jewish Americans who helped form the fabric of American history, culture, and society. And whereas members of the Jewish community have been living in the greater metropolitan area since the 1800s, with a current population of about 40,000 across the Portland metropolitan area, including Beaverton. And whereas Beaverton area elected officials from the Jewish community include: United States Senator Ron Wyden, United States Representative Suzanne Bonamici, State Senator Elizabeth Steiner, State Representative Dacia Graber, and School Board Member Susan Greenberg. And whereas the Jewish American story is an important chapter in the American story of the American story that has contributed to the religious, cultural, political, economic, and intellectual advancement of all. And whereas the Jewish community in the United States is a targeted religious minority and continues to be challenged by bigotry, hatred, and discrimination. And whereas the Beaverton City Council joins together with people of all faiths and ethnicities to reject bigotry and hatred, advance equality, compassion, and tolerance, and root out hatred wherever it exists. And whereas Jewish American Heritage Month is a nationally recognized opportunity to learn and appreciate Jewish heritage and reflect on the history and experiences of the American Jewish community, serving as an antidote to antisemitism. Now therefore, Lacy Beatty, Mayor of Beaverton, does hereby proclaim May 2024 as Jewish American Heritage Month in the City of Beaverton and urge all residents to celebrate the Jewish community's achievements, raise awareness against bias and hate, and come together to honor the community.
Thank you, Counselor Teeter. Counselor Tivnan?
Thank you. I read this proclamation on behalf of the Office of the Mayor. Whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, on behalf of Lacy Beatty, Mayor of the City of Beaverton, I hereby proclaim May 5th through the 11th, 2024, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week in the City of Beaverton, and extend appreciation to our city recorder, Sue Ryan, and deputy city recorder, Jessica Gomez, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent.
Thank you. We're issuing these proclamations early because of our budget schedule, and we don't have any city council meetings. And I have it on good authority that Sue did not want us to give her this tonight, but here you go. Happy Municipal Clerks Week. Okay, with that, we are on to the consent agenda. And tonight, I will accept it from Counselor Teeter.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Teeter and seconded by the council president. Any discussion on tonight's motions? Seeing none, will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Dugger?
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty? Seven zero.
I have to vote, but yes. That's okay. You are a mind reader. Look at that. We do, are you giving the city manager report tonight? Or are we moving that?
Yes, Mayor, I am.
Well, the floor is yours.
Okay. I think I've got a timer. No. I think we're pulling up the presentation slides. I just want to maybe go off script for a second. One news item that's not on the slides, which is for your and the community's information, we have hired a community development director. So that, we've hired Andy Varner, who is currently the city manager in North Plains. And he will start his new role with us June 3rd. As I'm sure you can guess, I'm excited to have that hire, you know, someone who will capably join the city and relieve me of that duty. So excited to have him join. And we're already planning onboarding and all kinds of other activities for him. Since the slides are up, if we can go to the next one. So the city manager's report is going to highlight council priority and some other actions and activities that are happening this month and in coming months. So talking about natural resources, I just want to note that the season is changing, right? It's actually getting a little bit warmer, and there's a lot of pollen in the air. So one, recognize some of the work that's been going on towards the council priority of natural resources. Specifically, the city striving to make a more sustainable future. We've been working on, with the Climate Action Task Force, specifically on looking at strategies within our climate action plan. Specifically also working as staff in Public Works on diversifying water and our water sources to keep water available and abundant for current needs and for future generations. As we go into the priority area, the idea is as well to facilitate the language in the goal says to facilitate and implement initiatives to conserve and restore natural resources and reduce energy consumption. And related to the Climate Action Plan, we are underway, or in the beginning stages, I should say, in the next Climate Action Plan, the 2.0 version. Looking to get a consultant who will assist us in that work on board and to get the plan underway in terms of the engagement, working with our task force, working with other residents, and working with you all. So looking at what likely will be a longer duration plan with hopefully fewer very specific goals, but with an overarching framework that we can have much more reactive, and not in a bad way reactive, but react to things that are happening in the climate and in the community, and be able to be more strategic year to year and working on climate strategies and actually seeing results from the Climate Action Plan. Also hoping to use community engagement and community partnerships in a greater way than we did in the previous plan. More information, there'll be more information in the May-June Your City newsletter. And there's also a link on the slide for Your City. If I can get the next slide. Try and go through these maybe a little faster. But the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Strategy is another climate solution that we're working on. Working on implementation of that over the next year or so. And with that, you know, essentially scoping changes to amend the Beaverton Development Code to comply with the state's CFAC Climate Friendly and Equitable Community Program, CFAC. And specifically looking at climate-friendly areas and climate-friendly communities. And so the idea being a mixed-use area with housing, a mix of housing, jobs, businesses, services, all kinds of things that would be in closer proximity to one another, reducing car trips, travel time if people are making trips in a vehicle. Just looking at, I think, hopefully enhancing the quality of the community in the sense of both the lived experience and also some of the opportunities folks have to work in the community. We're looking at, right now, getting grants. We were awarded some funds from the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development that will help with staff time as we work on this the next year and help defray some of the costs of implementation. We're hoping to have a proposal for you of the development code changes sometime in June of 2025. So it is a long process, and it's involved. So not to overpromise, but you know, we'll have some draft forward for you and likely have many touchpoints as we work on that project between now and 2025. The next slide, please. Library service is a couple of literacy and library slides here. Specifically talking about a service that is being offered by the Washington County Cooperative Library Services that is the "Let the Library Come to You" concept. And essentially providing all the materials, the books, movies, audiobooks, et cetera, for folks who are not able to come to the library. So extending the reach of our offerings into the community. The idea, eligibility is required, and eligibility is essentially living in Washington County, having a physical condition that prevents you from visiting the library for at least six months, living in a care facility, or that you are an in-home care provider, caregiver. So hopefully, a service that folks will take advantage of. There's information about it on the wccls.org website, where residents can call 503-648-9785 or reach out to our library. Next slide, please. April is National Poetry Month, as well as Financial Literacy Month. I'm not sure that those are necessarily intertwined, but we do have financial literacy offerings that occur at the library. So wanted to essentially share both those, and I will not break out in poetry for you all. I'll save that for later. But essentially, having a celebration for teens, essentially grade six through 12, a poetry contest that we're looking for participants. And I just want to encourage our youth to participate in essentially entering a poem in the form of their choice. So I think National Haiku Day is like tomorrow. So for what it's worth, haiku is an option. But essentially, through the library website, beavertonlibrary.org, there is a link to 2024 poetry contest. And there are prizes for winners of the poetry contest. I have no idea who's going to judge. I hope it's not me. But there are prizes for middle school and the high school divisions, $150 and $25 gift cards to Powell's. There is also Financial Literacy Month. The library is hosting events in April. April 20th, teens, grades 10 to 12, and their parents can learn about controlling the cost of college from the FAFSA forms and looking at scholarships. There's also events for adults and teenagers in the older bracket, 17 and up. Essentially looking at a four-part financial education series that will cover budgeting, credit, and debt, savings and retirement, and how to plan for big purchases. So some really interesting financial literacy classes and offerings that are coming up, and they're advertised on the library's website. And other library-related, but not literacy or poetry news, just want to give you the good news that Greater Good Northwest Outreach Workers were able to help 236 individuals in February. That's the busiest month that they've had since being on-site at the library. And it's also ironically the shortest month of the year. So want to give kudos to the library and to Greater Good for connecting people with critical services. Next slide, please. Almost done. So I also want to note that we have a volunteer, April is Volunteer Month. So we have a volunteer fair, of course, that we want to advertise, and it's not in April. But we just want to share that that is occurring in June. It will be also at the library on June 8th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Just want to recognize the city's volunteers that we have serving on boards, commissions, neighborhood associations, working for departments like the library or our emergency management teams. A lot of the efforts that volunteers in the community are able to give us in terms of hours and time and their knowledge and their passion helps to fray costs to the city. So I just want to acknowledge that and celebrate that in April appropriately. And then ask for more help. Volunteer Fair participants be exposed to a lot of offerings, both the nonprofit and our community organizations, as well as city opportunities. And for more information on that, beavertonoregon.gov/volunteer. And wait, there's more. One more slide, please. There are, in May, since the mayor did mention that we are not having council meetings, we are having upcoming Budget Committee meetings. So just a reminder that, as the slide says, we've got meetings that will occur May 7th and May 14th for the Budget Committee. The, I want to encourage people to participate to learn more about the city's budget and the fiscal and current fiscal situation and steps that we're taking to both address it and to invest in the community and community service. So there'll be information online, beavertonoregon.gov/budget. And that information should be up, I believe, May 1st. And so there'll be information about the proposed budget, and people can follow along as the Budget Committee meetings occur. Definitely encourage people to check out the website as well because we've created a lovely and entertaining, and actually, I think, very informative video about the budget process. And that video is housed on that website. So please check it out, and hopefully you find it informational and somewhat entertaining, as much as budget can be. And I think that's it.
We have two presentations to write a compelling haiku, so get to work.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we have two presentations this evening. We're going to start with Agenda Bill 24031. What? Okay, this isn't like a chat time, but...
I have a follow-up question. I'll keep it very, very brief. Regarding the Climate Action Plan search for the consultant, I was just curious on the reach for finding that consultant. Is that going to be an advertisement that's sent out far and wide across the nation? Because I imagine that the field of consulting around this particular topic has grown and evolved in the convenient years since 2019 when the last report was done?
Yeah, well, right now, we're probably not likely to do it far and wide, only because we, there is really one firm that in this region is primarily doing a lot of the Climate Action Plan documentation and, you know, helping communities through that process. And we have a cooperative purchase that we can do on that, which would expedite getting into the plan and getting into that process. So I think we're working on essentially trying to put together a scope of work at this point and making sure that we can use them and that they can provide the services we need and expect. But I think we're expecting to be able to use the firm piggybacking on the costs that others have negotiated.
Was this firm the one that, did they partner with us on the last climate, or the initial one?
In some form, yes. I think that company was subsumed by this other company that is likely to be the firm. So there may be some elements. I'm not sure exactly who was brought on from that previous firm. But yeah, there was, they're related now.
Got it. Okay, all right. Yeah, I'm just going to be curious, the, I think everyone's got their eyes on this, and they're going to be looking for a plan that's got a lot more implementation characteristics to it, not just amazing ideas, which the first one did. I'm really excited about this, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Hassan?
I was going to start with breaking out with a poem.
Well, if it's a haiku.
But I won't. I actually want to carry on to something that Counselor Tivnan says is, as we do go through that search, ensuring that we are managing expectations of what we can and can't do. I think that we get really excited about all the things we can do, and then maybe we can't do them all. I did notice the slide when I went to beavertonoregon.gov/yourcity. It didn't take me to something sustainability. I don't know if that was on purpose or not. So if you could just send us out the right link for what that should be.
I'll do.
Thank you.
Counselor Teeter?
Okay, we're a chatty group tonight, apparently. I've got one question related to the volunteer fair. You mentioned volunteer opportunities related to the city. In the past, I know there have been community organizations involved too. Is that the case this year too?
Yes, my understanding, it's a little bit of both. It's probably more other folks, given the city probably has a table.
Okay, great. I know when I was with the Beaverton Downtown Association, we received a lot of really great volunteers through that event. So if you all know organizations that should be involved, send them over.
All right. Here's my haiku. Can we move on now? It's time to get to work. Let's go with the library. Five seven five?
Yeah. Let's go with...
Oh dang. How about "let's go" as a hyphen? Okay, you're right. I was going with the words, not syllables.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I'm Kim Carroll, the Director of the Beaverton City Library. I'm here with Andrew Love, who is our Library Advisory Board Chair. And he is going to present our library annual report tonight. And so I'm going to turn it over to Andrew.
Hello? Yep, that's me. Hello, councilors? I know some of you from being on the library board. So yeah, this is our 2023 annual report of what the library board has been up to. So our general board activities are our normal meetings, reviewing comment cards, and monitoring what else is going on with the library, as well as reviewing library policies. One of the big activities that happened this year was the One Book One Beaverton for this year, where we had the author, Jamie Ford, come to the reaser. And they gave out, there were a bunch of books that were given out for the whole community to be able to read this book. And there were a lot of events in the library and around the community that were associated with this so that everyone was on the same page reading the same book. We also were quite involved with the new placard that Beaverton, that was put up, talking about the Beaverton Fire Department. It's up in the library. When you go in, turn to your right, there it is. Some of you were at the ribbon cutting. The plaque was presented to the library board, and we actually went through and helped give some advice on what we wanted to see. And then they finally put the whole thing together, and it's a really pretty placard. The library is where the Beaverton Fire Department used to be before TVFNR took over. Also a new thing this year, the Bookmobile EV is running around. It's all over, I put some of the locations that you can find it. And there's a lot of information about it. But now, again, with the same outreach that was talked about earlier, more places can actually get library books because they can have the Bookmobile come to them. And then you can check out books as though it was a normal branch. Just some information about circulation. There was definitely a drop of physical circulation due to the pandemic, but we're coming back up. And then eBooks and audiobooks and everything are on the rise. So everybody's really using those eBooks. Next up, some regular business. One is that Kim Carroll here took over for Glenn as the new library director. We've been reviewing what has happened to the library's budget with the reduced hours at Murray Shoals. We resumed our in-person meetings, but we, just like you, are doing hybrid meetings. Not everyone can physically make it. We've been doing library backstage tours, which are always fun, where you get to see how the library works in the back. And the machine that does the auto sorting is very cool. I could probably sit there and just watch that all day. And we've been reviewing some policies that the library does and giving our feedback and approving what the policy is based on the library board. And then we've been monitoring the merger of the Beaverton New Friends and the Beaverton Foundation. So they're going to become one big organization to support the library. There's some general library services that we've been keeping an eye on. There's new study cubes that have opened up in the library upstairs. The library's been used as both a warming center and a cooling center, depending on the time of the year. There's, the Library of Things collection has been expanded. There are a whole lot of things, 10,000-plus circulation during last year. But there's things that you wouldn't normally think of as looking for. Lots of board games, tents, musical instruments, GoPro, shredders, metal detectors, all sorts of cool stuff that you can check out from the library. You can do free printing at the library. You can do free printing at the library. There are no more fines at the library. And you'll get some auto-renew notices that, so you don't even have to push the button. It'll renew it for you if nobody else wants your book. So that's great. And then lastly, the Makerspace has had 15,000 visitors since opening. It's a huge success and a lot of people like all the crafting they can do at the library. Some other events, there's a million other things that go on with swap meets, Greater Good Northwest, as was mentioned earlier, is set up at the library. The Teen Art Show did its work at the library. There's been a bunch of book sales, as well as the Library of, Library on Wheels going around to child cares. Some ongoing library events, citizenship classes, storytimes in eight different languages and other, other classes and events that people can attend throughout the library. And then lastly, where we're going from this, we're planning to make a work plan to align with the council goals based on that meeting, recent meeting where everyone was trying to get on the same page. Reviewing additional policies, continuing our ongoing review as we go through the library policies. We'll be supporting and sharing programs throughout the community. And we're continuing to stay informed on what the Friends of the Beaverton State Library is up to, on how they are supporting the library and additional activities that they're up to. That's it. Didn't want to take up too much of your time. Thank you.
I appreciate you coming in tonight. It's quite the update. I would also say I went to the book sale this weekend and it was insane. And my six-year-old came out with two gigantic bags of books for $10. Best deal in town for sure. Counselor Hussin?
Thank you for your presentation. I will say I got to sit on the Library Advisory Board, hands down, like the way that y'all work together with staff and the community. Like, it's just, like, we've gone over comments and like go through like what people are saying and working on policies. So thanks for all you guys do. I just wanted to comment, the programming policy and the meeting policy, something for you to think about. I'd love to hear like what some of the, our other board members, like on the diversity advisory board or other groups, like what their way in might be. I know that we've heard mixed signals about like how hard it is to program or how hard it might be to meet. And then I don't know what the costs are associated with some of those things and whether we've assessed whether that's something that's working for us. So something to think about in the future. Thank you.
Counselor Teeter?
Yeah, thanks, Andrew. There are a couple, a couple of pieces mentioned in the ongoing library events that I wanted to highlight because they're also part of the Beaverton Committee on Aging Programming. So there is some overlap between these two committees. I sit as the liaison for both. So it's really great seeing the partnership between, between each of those committees with, within the library. So, yeah, good work.
Joining us this evening?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, next we have Agenda Bill 24032, the Facilities Master Plan. I do believe our Assistant City Manager, Dan, will be coming into the hot seat for that.
Good evening, Council and Mayor and community. Yes, Dan Weinheimer, Assistant City Manager. And I apologize ahead of time for what may be a somewhat lengthy presentation. But want to essentially come back. This is our final presentation of the Facility Master Plan as we've gone through a long process to get to this point. Want to just kind of sum up based on feedback we received at our last meeting with y'all, which was to come back with recommendations. So we are back with recommendations and want to provide a little bit of context before I get into them, but then kind of work through the recommendations as well. We've got folks online from our Makers Consultant Team who might be able to answer some of the technical questions and/or Travis here, who might be able to answer some of the more detailed, specific to Beaverton questions. We also, I just want to thank the LRS team as well for their help as a consultant team in this process. Feel like we were well-supported by all. So just, like I said, a little bit of background here. This project has been long and extensive in its review of our needs. We set out with some goals that are here on the slide. I'll try to sum up quickly, which was essentially to program for our future needs, think ahead and start to build into our financial planning some of the, those needs so that you don't have a surprise, you know, hey, we need a million dollars for this thing. And so I think, thinking about things long-term, thinking about what gaps we may have was a key aspect of the questions we put forward to the consultant team. We also wanted to think about what our best course of action was for several near-term priorities, thinking about space needs, but also thinking about how we might use existing assets we own. Also, having the idea of leveraging existing assets and taking opportunities when we could to think about what might be policy changes or administration of how we are showing up in our facilities and using our facilities and being creative in that and getting some ideas from, from outside the organization in that regard. Also, looking at, to me, this is one of the key goals, the idea of optimizing the way we serve, the way we serve the community. And so, one, centralizing our administration and our staff that are not in the field as much so that there is more of a one-stop shop for those residents who come in and might come to the planning counter, for instance, or, or come for service, utility billing, or those kinds of things. One place so that they don't have to bounce around all over the place in the community. And then, two, looking at distributed operations and for some of our maintenance functions, trying to get closer to the places that they maintain so we're more efficient in how we do that and provide service. Lastly, just looking at ways to think about, for staff and the council, how we adapt, as we've had in this, toward the beginning, I suppose, of this project. We were dealing with COVID and there were some changes around staffing. And we're also looking at long-term, the potential for, for growth in the community and for other needs. We, we see growth coming as, as we speak, in terms of Cooper and South Cooper and just how we might think about serving those communities as we grow. So, real quickly, as I jumped too far, key project steps, just summarized here of just kind of times that we've come before y'all, how we've engaged with other staff teams, with department heads. This is, as advertised, the final milestone briefing. Real quickly, I just want to stop for a second here and just note that we've got project costs and a lot of these recommendations kind of estimate costs for most of it. In some cases, we're closer to executing a project, so we might have a more clear cost for a project. But generally speaking, I just want to highlight the 20% contingency that we're planning. It's large. You know, it's larger than we would normally have for projects and we're doing that because we are so far away from some of these projects being executed and they may change in scope. We may see inflation, as we've seen over the last couple of years. So we're trying to plan a little bit ahead and soften some of the blow there potentially if we see, well, you told us it was going to be this and now it's this. And so just putting that out there. When we also think about some of the other assumptions that are baked in here on the right of this slide, we've got potential funding opportunities and we've talked about these tools in the past presentations. What we're looking for is not necessarily specific actions that we're going to take at the moment, but we want to basically share the suite of potential tools. And, you know, socialize the idea that we might use them, continue to refine how we're going to execute some of these projects, in essence, and just share, like, these are the options we're thinking about. In terms of the way that we're looking at these, you know, we understand, of course, you all understand more than most, the financial picture and the constraints. We also have, for a long time, I think, the, the city's not necessarily invested as much money in its facilities as we would have hoped and liked as, I think, as staff. And maybe you all, when you're looking at this plan and thinking, wow, this is really expensive, you know, it's landing on your lap or at your feet to make a decision on. And so we're trying to address that and to really think about, you know, what can be done immediately, what can be done in the next decade, and what can be done over the next, potentially 30 years or so, if there are longer-term projects. So that we've laid out a lot of our assumptions and the recommendations that way. So what we have tried to do here in terms of the way we've, you know, sort of stealing my own lead here and ignoring the right side of the slide, but talking a little bit about the left side, the prioritization criteria, we look for low or no-cost solutions. We look for ways we could leverage existing assets, you know. So of course, why buy something when you can, you know, use what you own? We should probably take care of the things that we own as priority so that we maintain them and have use and extend the useful life, those kinds of things. Looking at things that are urgent and, you know, potential risk for us going forward. And then just trying to be proactive about how we're going to achieve long-term goals just by starting the conversation around some of these facilities. The recommendations are on the right. I'll get into them in more depth, but that, this is the sort of overarching recommendation summary. And, you know, like I said, we'll, we'll dive into it, so I won't spend a lot of time on that. The two big areas that we, just to refresh here, but the two big areas we were looking at were the Public Works Operations Space and the administrative and court functions that are spread between TBB, the Beaverton Building, and Griffith Park. And so, starting with Public Works Operations, the findings from the consultants, you know, Operations Center, we've got a picture at the bottom here. It's, it's oversubscribed, to say the least. We've got really tight quarters, a lot of equipment and close quarters. It can create a dangerous situation for staff and for the maintenance of our equipment because it's so tight in the parking area. Things that are not undercover, you know, so there, there's a need there. And I think we've recognized that there's been a need for quite a while. We understand, you know, the, it's both an operational issue immediately and also a long-term issue in terms of the ability, bless you, for emergency response and those kinds of things. And for, you know, where the location of the facility is, making sure that it's outside, in the future, we'd like it to be out of the floodplain and/or mitigated. We've acknowledged that water, storm, and sewer are the most urgent needs. And in part, the reason for that is we're growing those systems. And so we're going to continue to have more staff, more equipment, more need to maintain those systems as we get into that cycle. And with the growth of the community, we're seeing that already underway. When we have ice events and things like that, there are issues that come up that we have to flip into a maintenance mode.
Can, can I just ask you a question for clarity here? 160th is not in a floodplain. Are you saying Operations Center is?
I'm saying Operations Center, yes.
Okay.
Yes, sorry. It's not clear. Yes, I'm sorry, this is findings of the existing Operations Center. And then the, essentially the idea, as I already said, of like trying to get those operations folks closer to where they serve, you know, everything in one location on the end, on a side of town, especially as we're growing away from it geographically, is challenging for a long-term effectiveness and resiliency of our staff. 160th is underdeveloped, underutilized. It's mainly used for laydown, but there's also a portion of that site that is under, or that is not being utilized at all. And so the proposal addresses both. The idea we brought forward as well of extending the fleet service to closer to, finding a satellite smaller location for quick service of police vehicles near the Public Safety Center is something we've talked about and it's something we want to explore. So getting into the recommendations around Public Works, again, the layout, like next steps, immediate, next decade, medium term, and then long-term solutions. And we've tried to include rough order of magnitude costs, that's ROM. So thinking about it from the standpoint of $20, $24 and then adding that 20% inflation, where we think, we, I think, thinking about the next decade and beyond for most of that. But anyway, the next steps, we're looking at, for the 160th yard, looking at a funding strategy, trying to, to look at master planning that and looking at some of the cost estimates. We are looking at, essentially trying to get to the point where we've got a clearer plan and we're able to fund the construction that we would look to do. We look at that in the next decade. It's not 10 years out, but it's sometime in that next decade as we can secure funding and we're secure in that at $21 million with the idea of long-term, thinking about other storage needs and, you know, essentially looking at maintenance and some of the activities, I think, around that. Did I miss anything on that? Okay. The next recommendation, acquire property, redevelop the Operations Center. So this is what we've talked about in the past, the idea, we are constrained and, you know, we like to grow the footprint of the Operations Yard, finding some property that's adjacent so that we have additional parking for vehicles, additional office space potentially. And so looking at that, that option, you know, essentially looking in the near term more as a real estate endeavor, you know, trying to figure out what might be available, where we can secure expansion, what I think is both on the market and maybe talk to partners about opportunities to co-locate with them as well and/or facilities that they're not, not using anymore, surplus facilities, things of that nature. Continue to look for the real estate around the Public Safety Center for the fleet site and looking at, essentially, one of the things that has happened with the, the recent Public Works realignment is, facilities maintenance has also taken on a landscape function, not all of the urban forestry, but the portion that's around buildings essentially, and sort of trying to think about a team that is more cohesive of the inside and outside maintenance of a building. So we've alleviated a little bit of the pressure of growth and the staffing at the Operations Center by moving those staff over to Griffith, which is where Travis and his team office. And so there may be things like that that we're able to do to kind of continue to give a little bit of life in terms of the longevity of, or the size, I guess, of the capacity of, to hold staff at the current Operations Yard as we look at the real estate side and try to get a plan together. Next decade, we're looking at acquiring property and, you know, acting on that real estate endeavor. Then thinking about, you know, the opportunity I just mentioned, thinking about how to, to build that out a little bit more and/or, you know, if we, or as we deal with Griffith, what that downstream means for the facilities team. Long-term, looking at getting the build-out completed and meeting remaining needs. And so, you know, just looking at something that would be in the rough order of magnitude of $40 to $80 million potentially because of the property acquisition and construction costs and things like that, especially as we think about growth and some of the equipment and facilities needs we're going to have in Public Works. Flipping over to our court and admin, and so this is the idea of the office functions, both, both the court functions and some of the Griffith and Beaverton Building office functions. We've got some, some pictures on the right of the roof at, I think, at Griffith and the restrooms, you know, just noting that they're not to a current standard for ADA. They're not necessarily, the, we, we're going to have to do maintenance to the roof and the roofs are expensive. And so we want to know or we want to have that question answered of what, whether it's worth doing that, that work or when do we make investments that are expensive. So the court and admin functions are generally underutilized, the Griffith Building in particular. We are looking at a lot of risk around seismic and flooding that we can't necessarily, because of the cost, and we've talked about this in the past, this idea that because of the location in a floodplain, we're limited on the amount of remodel that we are able to do. We're all, it limited both because it will trigger some ADA costs, but also it will, more importantly, we're limited by what we can invest because of the floodplain issues. And so it's really not enough to cover what we would need to do, what we would expect to do in terms of the overall maintenance of the building to make it more broadly habitable. What we've talked about is, you know, the idea of replacement and we've talked to some real estate professionals, got in their opinion, the idea de jour is trying to find a, essentially on that site, what you ideally might do, in their opinion, is to take a portion of the Griffith site, build a smaller building that might meet your more specific needs and then sell the remaining parcel. It's a lot to undertake and would be a little bit further out in our recommendations, but there is other options as well. So the idea of trying to have that proximate, walkable connection between our office functions, both from an efficiency standpoint for administration and for residents when they both from an efficiency standpoint for administration and for residents when they come in to provide, that we can provide service in one location, is a key consideration. We want to obviously be as accessible as possible, so the idea of looking at transit proximity and other proximities would be helpful as we kind of get through that real estate process. Server and vault are also over at Griffith, and so, those are key considerations we've talked about in the past, and we've got some actions underway there. To the Beaverton Building, what we've done here on the right, we've got a couple graphs. One on the top is essentially the idea of what our total usable area is in the black bar and demonstrating that we're likely going to outgrow or maybe are currently outgrowing the usable space that we have. And really, with the right, the 30-year space needs, very colorful bar illustrates is that if you stack the needs, as we expected them to be over 30 years for each of the functions mentioned, we're going to be over capacity in the Beaverton Building as it currently stands. We really won't be able to continue to grow. And that's assuming that we terminate our leases, our third-floor leases, and that is a budget hit as well. So, it's a net loss of revenue and also just the idea that we're really constrained within the building for the functions we have. The lower part of this, the fourth-floor workstation capacity, is actually a bit of a combination, I think, of the Community Development Department and Public Works Departments that occupy the fourth floor and the idea of exploring a couple different strategies for how we use the facility or use the office, I should say, the office spaces. So, the idea that we are essentially in Community Development, you've got what is required now in the black, on the far left, for each of the two sets of bars. The idea of what would be required in 10 years, and you'll note that we're exceeding what's available, required now. And then, if we went to one strategy, the red color is the idea of we shared workstations, if we essentially split the time on workstations, doubled up, as it were, what that might get us in terms of the need. We'd still obviously need workstations and, you know, they'll take a footprint and so that it might buy us some time. But then, the idea that the shrinking of workstations would give us additional capacity. But I think what, the takeaway that I took and, you know, there probably are other better takeaways, but the idea that for Public Works, you know, we're really not as successful with the strategy of the 50/50 of sharing workstations as much as we might be with smaller workstations. There's an investment in that, you know, so the upfront to change the configuration or the size of cubicles. I think our consultants estimated at about $300,000. We're not ready to do that, but we'd have to design them and essentially secure that equipment if we wanted to do that and to shrink the footprint of cubicles. The other issue that may, we may run into, we have not yet vetted the building code issue of that, if we put, you know, there's certain headcount that you can put in, and so it may not be a full six by six across the floor. It may, we need to be more judicious about how we would apply that, I think. So, it may not bear out entirely. The Griffith server and vaults, the next two slides, recommendations around the server space, you know, is a critical need and something that is a big risk for the community, for the city in particular. There's, within the server rack, it's not a server, it's multiple servers, but it's easier to say server than servers, I guess. But the idea that there are multiple users and so, we've gotten, we've started a project on this essentially, and you may note that this project went from $80,000 and now it's $450,000. That's because we essentially had a swag from the build-out of the Public Safety Center, essentially, an estimate of what that would cost to finish that room. It wasn't to move the servers over and to do all the other infrastructure and cabling and those kinds of things. And now, the ITSD is looking into that. They've gotten what I think is a solid estimate and is reflected in this project recommendation for the next decade. I think we'd like to execute on this project the next couple of years and would budget to do so. So, it's more just an awareness of what it takes to do some of the cabling and the technical side of moving critical infrastructure for the IT folks. And some of that is also building out the air conditioning and other things that we would need, you know, essentially, to make that a resilient move. The vault is more complicated. It has infrastructure around a lot of different things, essentially broadband, as well as some of the signaling infrastructure for traffic signals and for a traffic department or traffic engineers. We would need to do more digging, pun intended, but also literally in the next steps to figure out what we would need to do to move their other people's equipment, because there are several tenants of the vault space that are not the City of Beaverton. We'd need to coordinate with them and make sure that they're prepared for a move. The idea, I think, is that we move the, that infrastructure from Griffith to the Public Safety Center, but again, this is not all our infrastructure, so it's coordination and a cooperation project, and so it will take many more years and we think more money. We, I would not expect that we would bear the entire cost of that, and so that's one of those areas we would need to scope, and we have not yet been able to do that project. The recommendation around Griffith, the idea of a new facility, so the next steps for this, the immediate steps, the recommendation is essentially to get a project team together, completing, you know, all of the real estate in due diligence, looking at some of the options that we described in terms of desk sharing and the administrative kind of change of how we use our spaces. Those are relatively inexpensive options and can be budgeted. The next decade option is really looking both with partners and at other opportunities for space, whether it's owned or potentially other, other funding sources, other funding strategies, even the potential for a long-term lease, depending on what we're able to acquire, being able to essentially have that $45,000 or so square feet in downtown for court and administration growth, proximate to Beaverton Building, and essentially then look to divest of the Griffith site and/or redevelop the Griffith site so that that is a next decade decision as we would go forward and have a better plan, a clearer plan around that. So, the long-term, as I mentioned, from the real estate side, the professionals that we consulted was sell what you don't need, and that would help defray some of these costs. The other strategy that's really important, don't want to undersell the fact that it's at the back end of the report, is essentially the asset preservation strategy, which is continue to budget to maintain what you own. And we've got both projects funded and projects completed that are going to extend the life of a lot of our infrastructure and our assets. And so, you know, that's actually something to be celebrated, and it's better to spend on that than it, you know, I think, as you'll see, you know, these recommendations of cost, it's much better and much cheaper to spend on maintenance than it is to replace things. So, right now, we've funded almost $13 million in the budget and either are in process on executing or have executed these projects since 2020. Kind of gives you a rough order of magnitude also of how many facility projects there are and how expensive they can be. But re-roofs, looking at building enhancements, looking at HVAC systems and upgrades, you know, building out really well-used and well-loved library facility and, you know, looking at shelter construction and things of that nature. So, it's, just a slide to make clear, it's important for us to continue to look to the future and to budget effectively for maintenance of the facilities. The other is thinking about these two beautiful facilities that are brand-new, more or less, and that they are going to eventually fall into that cycle of needed repair. And so, just that idea of the whole purpose of this plan, which is to look into the future and plan for our needs and prepare for the costs that are coming and some of the projects. What we've been doing is periodic third-party reviews with essentially folks who can give us their assessment of the state of our facilities and recommended projects and maintenance activities, and then we're budgeting for them. And so, continuing to do that and preparing for the fact that we have assets that are on the books that are new, that are eventually going to need maintenance activities and they're gonna, we're going to need a plan for those, and they're going to need to be budgeted. Real quickly, I'm almost to the end. Apologize for talking as much as I have tonight, but the idea of a roadmap for next steps. So, this is a culmination of the next steps, next decade, long-term approach for what was offered already, focused on 160th, the idea of building a satellite auxiliary Public Works operations space, essentially, master planning the site, getting it ready for the potential for construction of a building, developing it, and, you know, essentially building out that site, building out additional need at other locations, water and other locations that we're building out as we expand our infrastructure. Public Works operations, looking for property, unfortunately, maybe looking for property still in the next decade, but hopefully, we're at a point where we have found something sooner than next decade or sooner than not and are in the process by long-term of redeveloping the Operations Center and really looking for ways to better use that site. Our consultants did not recommend, the real estate folks did not recommend divesting of that site, so it really would be, I think, a redevelopment of it and continued use, but that's something we can look at in the future as we get into that mode and we identify the alternative sites. Server and vaults, the server, I think, we're looking to do that sooner than, you know, 10-year decade, but in the next few years. We think it's a couple-year project, and then the vault is probably longer than that, but we're already chipping away at those things and we're looking to scope the vault project and get the conversation started with the various partners down there. I say "down there" because it's subterranean, but essentially, getting folks on the hook that we're looking to move this and we need their involvement in that project. So, that next decade, really kind of getting that done. Court and admin needs, I think we've got a little bit of time in the near term. Some of those strategies around desking and whatnot are going to help buy some time. We still will need to look at property and acquisition and then essentially renovating, building new, whatever the strategy is based on what we're able to find in the real estate market and what we feel comfortable with. I do want to say, as outcomes, you know, we looked at a lot, we asked a lot of questions. It's been really a helpful process from a staff perspective. I hope it's not too overwhelming from a council perspective, but it's been really helpful for us to investigate a lot of these questions and really have a consultant team that's capable of giving us some answers. We've looked at a lot of questions. We've had some success, I think, in that of really addressing some of the outlying questions we had about 160th, about operations, about Griffith. There's a lot in this overall plan and a lot that I think would have taken us a lot longer to really come to grips with without the consultant team, so I want to say thank you to them, but also thank you to you all because I know this has been challenging. It's a lot of money that you see. I think by taking it bite by bite with that near-term and medium-term strategy, I think we'll get there and we can budget for it. And I think realistically, this plan and the overall approach that we're looking at will help us prepare better for maintenance activities. Again, it's cheaper for us to invest in maintenance than it is to build something new or to find property and go through all of that process. It'll help us in terms of making sure we maximize this building and our asset here. It'll also help us make some determinations around the long-term needs for other functions and, you know, really makes us more sustainable financially and with our facility use. So, wrapping up, just want to say thank you for the time. Thank you for paying attention through this. I know, again, that it's, there's a lot of money attached to this, but I think what we're trying to propose to you is bite-sized manageable pieces, most of which will come back to you for consideration when you get to that dollar threshold, do you get to updating, when you get to decision points. Some of this is really more at the, just go ahead and implement, right? Like, look at, look for strategies around maximizing use and maintenance and budgeting and bringing forward those things. And so, you'll see that reflected in budgets year over year as we bring things forward. We can identify, this is something that was identified in the facility master plan or this is, this is an activity that will be addressing our long-term sustainability of our equipment or our buildings. So, generally speaking, the next steps, I don't want to repeat them, but I'll just leave it here. I think that's really my last slide, if I'm looking at my notes properly, and just stop talking. So, thank you.
Thank you. Generally, this is a presentation, so it's not usually invoking us to give you some sort of direction, but your slide is asking for it. My experience on master plans is that we vote to adopt them. I don't see that in your next step, so maybe you could tell the council what you're hoping for so we understand what kind of feedback, because this seems a little counterproductive to how this presentation's set up.
Well, what we wanted to do is inform you of what's proposed in the plan. And generally speaking, like I said, there are steps that will come forward for your adoption or for your consideration and, you know, feedback as we do.
So, are we not adopting this whole plan in its totality at some point?
I'm not sure that that's necessary, given, again, like, the pieces will come forward for consideration and adoption. I think what we were looking for in general and why it's presented as a presentation is more that it's, this is the direction, you know, we've talked about, general recommendations that we think are feasible, but we're not prepared, you know, because in essence, we're looking at, these are the projects and there's a lot of different ways that we think we might achieve them. It's not as, you know, as finite, I suppose, or as clear of like, this is the path we're going to take and this is the one and only way. We're looking at myriad ways that we're going to try to accomplish these things, so I think we're going to come back with individual projects underneath this plan, if that makes sense.
I think you're going to have to go back and do a little work with the city manager because I do think that the council needs to adopt something for clear direction because this council is not always going to be in this configuration with term limits, and future councils need to know kind of like where we put the, you know, a lot of this is, you know, obviously, it wouldn't tie them in the future if you're talking about a bond or a levy, that we can't tie future councils to that. But we've never had a plan that wasn't blessed by the council in a formal setting. So, I don't know how we do that in this kind of mixed-up, doing it in bite-sized pieces, but I do think it needs some formality around it. We're talking about a lot of money and we're talking about a lot of planning over the next 10 to 20 years. So, I'm not, I don't have any ideas for you. You're the idea guy, so I want to see something come back in a more formal setting that this council can agree to. Where are we, who's in there first? Counselor Tivnan.
Thank you. Yeah, my head was in the same place as yours on that of the fact that there is going to be turnover on the council inevitably, and having a master plan seems to indicate that it's something that's of a whole, not just the pieces within it. And I think it will make it easier for us to go out to solicit funds, go after PPPs, general obligation bond language, things like that, if we do have a cohesive whole to it. So, my head was there as well. The other question that came to mind for me was how we stay updated on this and what the schedule looks like to come back to council with updates on these next steps, because next decade, I'm like, is that 2030? Is that the next five years? It seems a little squishy in the long term. That could be 20 years, it could be, you've mentioned, 30. I know we got a whole lot we got to do here, and some of it is going to take a very, very long time for us to figure out exactly how to do it. So, just figuring out how we're going to track these things and getting some clarity on what this cyclical nature of the facilities master plan is going to look like over time would be helpful.
Yeah, I think our intent is really, again, like, this idea that there are discrete things that are coming forward in budget or in other ways, but we can also create a sequence, a cadence of bringing forward an update.
Yeah, I have two questions. The first one is, how much of this plan, if any, or is this part of the next steps, looked at other, like, government partners or other organizations, like the school district, for example?
So, I think the, let's just say, the plan itself is really looking inwardly about what our needs are and identifying and kind of calling out things that we would need to do and steps we'd need to take. I think that we definitely have communicated with partners and we plan to continue to about how to execute on the plan. And so, you know, there are possibilities of co-location or of, you know, of purchasing, acquiring property from partners, those kinds of things, and so, we And so we were exploring those kinds of opportunities, but didn't feel it was appropriate to kind of call out specific things in that sense, right? You know, the idea's there for sure. It's, that is a value that we want to put forward, is both using what we have, but also how do we partner to minimize the cost of any implementation.
Okay. I think like as you update us or keep us in the loop, just thinking about that, because, you know, what I have heard is that like school enrollment, for example, is down, right? And I wonder what that means in terms of buildings. I'm not saying I know anything, it's just as simple as like, could there be some opportunities there? My second question is around what these, like, what this data did in relation to what percent of our workforce is remote work. I know you talked a little bit about like desk sharing, like, did you go deeper than that, or is this still pretty high level?
I'm not sure the percentage, honestly, of staff that are remote work and/or how many days they're working remote, you know. Different departments and divisions, even within departments, sort of have different amount of days. I think we're generally trending towards more people being in the office again, but I don't think it's 100% by any stretch, right? So I'd have to ask from HR standpoint, maybe if they've got data around that, but generally speaking, what we were looking at was sort of the hard number of, you know, the desks, the occupancy of the fourth floor in particular, because the fourth floor is so crowded right now with, with office, and so trying to alleviate the crowding, and so looking at some strategies that might help for those to, the public works side, the engineering side, and for the community development department. And so within those, I could probably get you more detail about who's doing what, but I think it's generally just those are strategies that seem to make sense from a numbers standpoint and would give us some flexibility. I think there are concerns around the implementation, you know, people like their own space and all those things, right? So like, there's some, some morale that we probably need to message and work with staff on, and then there's practicality of, you know, the how. How do you share a desk? And, you know, what, whose personal effects are where, you know, nobody has personal effects, those kinds of implementation steps. We'd have to get into that more.
I do think, just like putting on my HR professional hat, like, I'm very curious, like, where the, like, this country will land. Like, there's a really big debate around like remote versus not remote. I know there's a lot of roles that you have to be here, but I just, it'd be really interesting to hear like HR's perspective on like where you're landing, because I think that that will change and evolve what you do in terms of allocation of space and what this looks like. The last comment I'll make, this isn't related to this, but this is just generally speaking, as we continue this work, I know that an issue that had come up a while ago was like gender-neutral bathrooms, and so just keeping that in the back of our, or keeping that front and center as we think of planning in the future, future. Thank you for the presentation.
Councilor Hartmeyer Prig.
I thought it was a work session, not a presentation, so I don't have to ask a question.
Councilor Teeter.
Okay. I really like most of what I'm seeing, and a big part of that is because I like thinking about how we can fix things long into the future so that future councils don't have to be having these same conversations. One of the things that concerns me that I would like more detail on as this keeps being worked through is that next decade phase. It feels like there are a few different sections that had a pretty major piece involved within the next decade, like a new building construction or a new property acquisition, and I'm just, I'm not seeing it here yet. Like, what's the total impact of that next decade planning? Because I can look ahead and I can say, oh yeah, we're going to get all these great projects done, but if all of it's hitting in 12 years, that would be a really hard thing for us to budget for and for us to share with voters. So that's something I'm nervous about, and I would love to see more details as this keeps working through it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that's all I've got.
Councilor Dugger.
Yeah, just a procedural question. I don't think I heard this, and I don't think I read it either. A few months ago-ish, our federal lobbyist let us know that the frameworks around some of the Inflation Reduction Act programs and things like that are being finalized. And did we look at the, the kind of order of operations of the construction and the kind of next steps through that lens of available, you know, some of these things will have funding available now, and that might shift the order in which we look at, you know, the vault maybe becomes first because this federal program is available, right? Did we look at it through that lens?
Honestly, I don't think we did. We tried to be more practical to the sense of like, this needs to happen, right? And then I think what we're trying to lay out in terms of the next decade and that idea that there is additional work is that step of like, what funding might be available? How might we prioritize and maybe move things up? That's why we tried to also not be super prescriptive about when things were going to happen, because we want to be opportunistic, but also realistic, both from the standpoint we can't afford everything all at once, and, you know, there may be additional funding available. My heart of hearts, for the vault in particular, there's got to be some federal funding from, like, some, you know, Homeland Security or somebody like that, right? If there's critical infrastructure that needs to be moved, we need federal support, but I'm not sure yet. We haven't done that diligence, but, you know.
I'd be really curious to see that, because I think, I think, I mean, they said that a lot of those programs would be finalized now and over the next coming months, and that would be really interesting to me, to look at it through this, and that's, that's all I had.
It's likely not going to be found in Inflation Reduction, but I could definitely see it in FEMA funding. Councilor Kimmy.
I just have two, two questions. How much do you have in general fund right now that's liquid that you can use to purchase a land or something that can move?
No doubt.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I'm just asking, what, do you have a basic number?
Yeah, I'm fully guessing out of, I mean, I think we'd have to get back to you on that in terms, you know, I think you could look to contingency, though, and.
Okay, I mean, something, if something becomes available, can you move?
Yeah, well, I think the question is also like, would we fund it entirely with general fund? Would we look for other funding strategies to extend or reach, you know, our bank for our buck? So I think arguably yes, but the question is also at what level and, you know, how, and, you know, all of those.
I'm going to save you, because your boss isn't here. I don't think arguably there is reserved fund to do it. I don't, I honestly don't think there'd be enough money to, for us to do that without going into critical day, like, way beneath our, our level. I mean, we bought this building with general fund, it was like eight million.
Right, yeah.
And that was a rare, I mean, obviously this was a steal.
Right.
But I don't think we could do that again, and this was cheap.
Definitely not, not plunk down all of the money from general fund.
Yeah, I think that's what he's asking.
Yeah, and I would say it would not be something we would ever look to do.
Okay. Another question is, when you say that the fleet moving to possibly a safety center or public safety, how big of a land are you talking about?
I think what we're talking about is really not the entire fleet operation moving over there, but really trying to acquire something small that is, and I don't know order or magnitude of space, and maybe Travis does, but I think we're looking at trying to essentially be able to do oil changes and minor maintenance, because what happens now is they drive the, the vehicle over to operations and drive it back. There's an extended amount of downtime because of that back and forth, or, you know, sometimes just routine maintenance, it's just quicker to pop over, right? And so just that idea of like proximate efficiency, and so I'm guessing it's maybe a couple acres?
Couple acres?
Yeah, probably smaller.
Two?
Less than.
About two? Couple of bay garage.
Yeah.
So, maybe, maybe two. Okay. There's a reason I asked that question, because, because of some other reason, I went to the church behind the public safety center, and then they actually mentioned it to me that when the previous mayor, when we were purchasing that small portion of the parking lot to build the public safety center, there was a discussion about city purchasing their property, and they were open to it, they're still open to it, if city's going to use for city function. So that's why I wanted to ask, why don't we revisit that and then approach, because they're, they seem like they're willing. They have some conditions, but it's available internally, so.
We'd definitely be happy to explore it. I'll just get the general fund checkbook out and.
Yes, that's why I was asking, like, what?
Just kidding.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And I could, we were never in talks about buying the whole thing. We only were in talks about buying the section we needed.
But that was kind of nation.
Well, Denny promised a lot of things.
Okay, okay.
Just throwing it out there, so. But I think that, I also, just my last thought on this presentation tonight, have we looked at the Cobb property as expanded for public works? We own it, it's gigantic site, it's right off Murray.
That I'm not sure of. I think, I think we looked at all available city-owned.
I mean, it wasn't on any of the documents, and we own the majority of the Cobb property off Murray.
Okay, yeah, we can find out.
THPRD owns the other half, but they owe us something these days, so we'll just take the whole thing.
Okay.
Set here first. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate it. All right, tonight for Council New Business, I do have one thing for us, as well as all of our work sitting up here on the dais, we did get a notice from the city attorney on his intent to retire. So I've been working with him on a timeline, and I want us to form a subcommittee to work on the timeline, get stuff to HR. My recommendation is the council president, since him and I have been working, and Ashley, the past council president, who has been working with Bill and I for about 12 to 18 months on this. And so what that would do is we would get together all the information for council, the timeline, how we're going to operate, how we're going to interview, and as a reminder, it is a council's decision on who the next city attorney is, but also them and us can't be involved in all of the details. So my suggestion is council president, myself, and Ashley, also Ashley went to law school and was a lawyer, so I think it'd be a good, the three of us to get it going. Can you object? All right. Any other, is this you for Council New Business? Councilor Teeter?
Yeah, I've got a few quick ones. First, two announcements. Beaverton Police Awards Night is Friday night, and then another event, Beaverton Voters Forum is coming up May 1st at the Reeser. And then, a quick update, the mayor, Councilor Hartmeyer Prig and I had another conversation about accessory dwelling units, that kind of building on our visit to Portland a few months ago. Continuing the conversation with Back Home ADU about how we can potentially prototype some affordable housing through ADUs, whether that's ownership or rentals. So we're still kind of learning more about that and how we can try some things out here. Do either of you have anything you want to add on that?
I would just say, one, that the police awards is not a public event, it's an internal event, and two, we have a meeting set next week, and we're also engaging the lobbyists, because we do think there might be a path with some of the governor's new bill around middle housing and revolving loan funds. So we're going to meet next week to truth-set that, and I think once we have that, Nathan on my team is also working on a white sheet from the practicality standpoints, from a policy standpoint and what we need to do. So my hope would be we'd have something for council probably in the next 60 days to have a cursory look at it.
Okay, thanks. I've got one more item. It's related to 217 construction and signage along, along Denny and Allen. And I've spoken with city manager about this a little bit, too, and I've gotten a lot of comments from community members, I live off of Denny, just about the ODOT signage during construction is very confusing for people. People continuing straight through oncoming traffic lanes, turning right on red when there's a no turn on red sign, and Dan, this might be a question for you, but I don't know if there's progress that you all can make with ODOT, or if this is something that maybe we can help push on, but it's something I hear a lot about. It seems very dangerous, and it seems like a pretty simple fix with just some signage.
We can definitely try to reach out and help.
Thanks.
Councilor Hartmeyer Prig.
So I'm going to tie this in to the theme, tomorrow being National Haiku. For those of us that got to go to our sister cities, Ogaki and Gotemba, we learned about one of the, like, greatest haiku writers of all time, his name is Matsuo Basho. And then last week, Nathan from Mayor's Staff and I got to meet a city councillor from Mishima, Japan, which is next to Gotemba, and his wife is from Gotemba, so it was very exciting. So anyways, mayor asked if I was going to say a haiku, so syllables, not words. We do amazing, things with the greatest staffing anyone could want.
Councilor Hussin? You better start with a haiku, Danny.
I was like, I have to go after that. So it's either my poem from high school, which I don't know, I'm ready to read you all, all I was going to say was, I just wanted to give a thanks to the folks in the audience, like, like, wow, y'all are like, this is like some commitment. Y'all sat through this whole meeting, I did not see any, it was just, thank you for joining us in civic engagement, it's been an awesome experience.